All CIP related. Number four is community appearance and blight. Number five is job creation, economic development. Number six is wastewater treatment plant expansion. Then quality of life opportunities for youth is number seven. Number eight is employee recruitment retention. Number nine is affordable housing. Number 10 is homeless, unhoused. And 11 is parks and recreation, open space planning. And number 12 is community and cultural relations.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Durham.
Yes.
So this poll, I will tell you why I like the red dot, yellow dot better. It actually shows me of the council members, I'm just going to use this for an example. Affordable housing, was that one person, one person's response? Two persons' response, three persons? I'd like to see it, I want to know how many responses for each one of these categories. And it doesn't, it doesn't give me any indication of how many of you actually responded for that specific category. Could be just two of you responded for that category and all of us are differing in our opinion. So I'd like to know, can you go deeper into this survey?
Can I ask a question as well?
Let me address that one first. Mr. Durham?
We could do it so that it could show, I think, by person, but this is what we thought and we did the best we could electronically. We can go back and recreate this at some other point in time, but it is set up so it's anonymous.
Yeah, I'm not concerned with it being anonymous. What I'm trying to say, I don't need the name, I need the number of respondees for each category.
For each category.
Yeah, threes, fours, fives, or whatever. Okay.
I'm not interested in the names.
Let me break that down. Because everybody had to, had to rank them, so I'd love to know, you know, on, we know on average where, where they rank, but you know, did some people put it as number one and some, and other people put it at the very end, or did everyone kind of put it somewhere in the middle?
But you're able to slice that and provide that type of information back to them?
You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand.
So for violent crime and gang activity, that was first place. Was that, three of us voted for, for first place?
And if what, I get what she's saying, so if you looked at the numbers and it was four people, obviously that would make it because four out of the seven. But if it was seven out of the seven, then that speaks stronger.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because we could see that with the dot.
I have a question, okay. And speaking as they are, to violent crime and gang activity, this line goes all the way out to number one. So does that suggest to me that everybody agreed that violent crime and gang was first place?
I don't think so, that is not.
I can tell you that's incorrect.
Okay. It's awaited.
I can tell you that's incorrect.
Yeah, but let's, what, what I would suggest is that, give us some time, we'll give, volunteer your time, to give you the information that's been requested by Ms. Weeks here.
Can I say something? This is very misleading to me, because that is not correct, the question she asked, and so this poll is misleading to me, because it goes all the way out to the end, which suggests that every single one of us voted for that for first place, and so the poll is misleading.
So that, that's what I was asking, because that would suggest to me that all of us said violent crime was our priority. And everybody didn't say that.
That's correct.
I think they understand the concerns, I think the goal of the exercise was just to, if we ranked it, would at least, not everybody thinks this is the number one priority, but this is what most people voted as the number one, number two, so. But we can get the detailed analysis on this for you guys to look at closer. I understand your concerns.
Yes, sir, because that could be just two people voted that.
It could be.
And it could be just two people voted city finance, so I would like a more accurate poll.
Well, you, you'd like more data associated with this one.
More data associated to it.
Yeah, I think you're able to do that, is that correct?
I understand.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, so the item that was ranked third.
Yes.
That is including streets and so forth, but it did not include the wastewater treatment plant? Because the wastewater treatment plant was supposed to fall under infrastructure, but that looks like infrastructure.
The wastewater treatment plant?
Because it, I mean, it ended up down the list, but it's, it's, it was supposed to be rolled into.
It was, yeah, I noticed that.
So the fact that it ended up down the list means somebody, I mean, somebody had to pick that choice, but then got the different meaning. Got the different meaning.
Okay, I'm not sure if I completely understand.
Waste water treatment plant shouldn't have stood alone.
It shouldn't have stood alone.
Alone, okay. And that should have been under?
Well, it's my understanding it should have fallen, should have fallen under the water sewer infrastructure, which, under the water sewer infrastructure, which I think public safety, is that correct, Mayor? When we had that conversation?
It was what we said, and I noticed I should have said something about it before there were, okay. Making the categories.
I think what we should do then is take this as a general guideline, and then is there a way to come back, even if we did it before the next council meeting or something, and give us a roll of stickers and, and let us, let us do what we did before. Because I agree with, I mean, it was nice to see, okay, there's all these red dots on this one and we can't see.
Let me suggest that we provide the additional data that was requested, and you'll have that. And then we can also, again, just one of the things I, I didn't mention in the beginning is that we're going to be here until tomorrow afternoon. There will be other issues that will come up, could be other initiatives that you would like to be included, we could revise these. So, again, this, this was a poll that was done, it gives you an idea of where we are right now, that's my understanding, and that's where we are. Again, questions have been asked about that, we can get those answers and also we can revisit this later on. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, all right, any other questions, comments? Matt, you got anything?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, we'll come back. So, next item on the agenda is?
Samantha Darlington from the North Carolina Department of Commerce.
Business Development Vision, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Joe, you're still working us through, through our agenda, right? You're still going piece by piece?
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Yeah, that's, that's my job, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And can I click it, or do I have to? Okay, great. Is this on? Can you all hear me? Okay, perfect. Hi, everyone, it is good to be back in front of you all to talk about the Economic Positioning or Vision Statement Forum that we did for the city of Goldsboro. I came and talked to you all a few months ago about what that might look like and, you know, what, what is coming out of the CDAP that we did back in 2022 for you all. So that's the Community Economic Development, and what this report is and how we got here. So I am with the North Carolina Main Street and Rural Planning Center, you all are a Main Street community, so you're very familiar with our center, but I am on the rural planning side, and so I work outside of just downtowns, cities, towns, counties, regions, so it's not just confined to the downtown area like the Main Street program is. And so back in 2022, the Rural Planning Program worked with the city to create a Community Economic Development Assessment and Plan. And in that plan, it was identified that you all should develop a comprehensive city economic development plan with three, five, and 10-year goals and objectives. And the CDAP really was just a, kind of a jump starter to the community's economic development efforts by providing you all certain action items that you could take on. When Kelly approached me, that was one of the things that was not completed as part of the CDAP, and we wanted to revisit that action item and see, is that something that is still necessary, and if so, what does that look like? And part of the CDAP was also a vision statement, and so because it expired in, it's 2022 to 2024, we wanted to go ahead and get an updated vision for you all, and that is what this report did and kind of talks about, what are the next steps? Do you all need a comprehensive economic development plan, and what does that look like? And so one of the main questions we asked when doing this vision was, where does the city fit in as far as the economy? What is the role the city is taking on, and what are some gaps that might need to be filled as far as the different organizations within the city? You all already have a lot of great organizations doing some economic development work, like the DGDC in downtown, and then the Wayne County Economic Development Alliance. We wanted to make sure that we were not reinventing the wheel. We also wanted to make sure we weren't repeating work or stepping on anybody's toes, we wanted everything to kind of flow and work together. And so by identifying these gaps and maybe the role the city could fill using this vision forum, we hope that we could help encourage that. So this was the updated vision statement that we came up with in the forum. So we had a group, a work group that was selected, a really, you know, diverse work group with people from all over the city with different perspectives, which was really great to hear, all of the different issues that might come up, but also, you know, we updated the community assets that were part of the report. If you see in the report that was provided, we went through and we updated all of the assessments that were done in the CDAP. So that's the community assets and also the SWAT. Then we went through and identified economic drivers and the partners and organizations that you had within the town, or within the city, to be able to update this vision statement. So this was the updated vision statement that the work group decided on. The city of Goldsboro, a strategic gateway between the coast and the state capital, serves as a thriving hub where agriculture, national defense, and transportation converge to fuel economic growth and business development. With deep-rooted heritage and a cooperative spirit, we are maximizing our assets to foster a resilient, sustainable economy and enhanced quality of life for all. Goldsboro is where dreams take flight and people and businesses grow. So the last sentence was something that was part of the CDAP, but we wanted to expand on and make some more, or be more detailed in the vision statement this time, so that it was more specific. And so within the vision statement, you can see we identified, you all are in a really strategic location, and we wanted to really talk about that in the vision statement, which is why it says the strategic gateway between the coast and the capital, because you do have such a great location as far as business development and as far as, you know, all of the development that is happening in the eastern part of North Carolina currently. And then we also wanted to talk about how you all have a really great heritage and history within the town, you have a lot of great historic preservation already happening, and you have really deep roots. The people who live here have deep roots here and are really committed to the city. And you all also already have a lot of great networking and partnerships going on. People really want to work together, and they all have a similar idea of wanting Goldsboro to be a great place to live for all people who live here, right? And so we wanted that to be reflected within the vision statement. And so part of the report outside of the vision statement was to kind of summarize what we talked about within the forum, but also to talk about what we learned while I was on the tour with Matt, we went and we toured the entire city, we talked about the different issues, we talked to a bunch of different stakeholders within the city. And so I wanted to go ahead and summarize those findings and some of the recommendations that came out of this forum. So we identified a few gaps. So we felt like small business development, there was some gaps as far as resources, so specifically outside of the downtown, really supporting the small businesses, the local businesses that are outside of the downtown. That doesn't necessarily mean you all need more resources, from what we could see, a lot of it is connecting those small businesses to the resources. You all already have a really strong community college, you have some good small business centers, but connecting those small businesses to those resources and helping them with that networking aspect was a gap that we saw. Another thing was the quality of life issues that were raised. So housing, childcare, and family-friendly amenities were all things that were talked about a lot in our vision forum. Mainly because if you don't have all of those things, if you don't have housing, you don't have childcare, and you don't have family-friendly amenities, it is hard to retain a labor force. It is hard to recruit businesses. It is very hard to revitalize your communities if you do not have all of the necessary infrastructure and support that those, the labor force needs to be able to thrive. And so that's workforce housing, and that's affordable childcare, and those family-friendly amenities to support the families, whether that be families that live on the Seymour Air Force Johnson, or Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, or local businesses within the city. We also talked about the revitalization that needs to happen beyond downtown, and that really was just, downtown has had such a transformation in the last 10 years. We talked about how great that transformation has been, but while the downtown development is very crucial, because a lot of times your downtown is the heart of your city, the revitalization efforts need to start extending to the neighborhoods outside of your downtown area, because those neighborhoods really do play a vital role in the overall appeal of your city as far as retaining employees, as far as bringing in businesses. Investment in those neighborhoods will improve the city's attractiveness to new businesses, residents, and visitors. And then we also talked about stronger partnerships and communications that needed to be had. So one of the largest issues I saw within the tour and within the forum was a lack of coordinated communication among your stakeholders. So that's including the city government, your housing authority, your county government, educational institutions, and your nonprofit organizations. There are so many great leaders and organizations that are doing important work in the city, but there's not a sufficient centralized communication and collaboration to maximize that impact. And so that was one of the gaps we felt like the city could take on, was being that central hub for communication and really creating that strong network of your city, your county government, your nonprofits, and all of the Chamber of Commerce, your downtown organizations, all of these things, places that are doing great, great work, bringing them all together and having a seat at the table so that they can discuss their work and talk about how they can enhance each other's impact. And then community engagement and transparency was the last issue we really talked about. So one of the critical issues that surfaced during the discussion was the need for greater citizen engagement in the development process, mainly because we saw and we heard that residents expressed, have expressed concerns about the potential for gentrification. There's a lot of fear around economic development and revitalization, because there is a very thin line between gentrification and revitalization, and you have to tread the line very carefully so you're not displacing people from their communities. And so because of that, there is a fear around economic development, there is a fear around revitalization, because people are scared they are going to get pushed out of the communities that they love and that they have roots in. It is a totally understandable fear that residents have, because we have seen it. There are, there are great examples of, well, I guess bad examples, but examples of gentrification going around North Carolina, but all over the United States because of mismanaged development efforts, right? And so because of that, people are more fearful of these changes. In order to combat the fearfulness and the concerns that residents might have about possible gentrification and displacement, one of the things we talked about was the community engagement and transparency that needs to happen. When citizens are more engaged in the development process, they are less fearful of that process in general, because they know what is coming, because they understand where that development is going, and they are reassured by not only their council, but their city government and the different organizations of what direction they're going, and that they care about the residents and keeping those communities in place. And so while it's a completely natural fear, and it normally stems from the nature and impact of development efforts, we really did feel like by the end of it, communication, community engagement, transparency was one of the biggest things that you all could do to combat those issues. So at the end of the report, you'll see eight key recommendations that we wanted you to take away from this forum. So one was, we did find there was a need for a comprehensive economic development strategic plan. As we were doing the vision, so many people were coming up with really great strategies, different projects that could be taken on, different networking options. All of this could be contained in a plan and should be, so that the city has an idea of what direction they're going in. And the plan should be developed with an updated vision serving as a foundation for that. So the plan needs to incorporate strategies to support small businesses, improve neighborhoods, and address quality of life issues, particularly as they relate to housing, childcare, and family-friendly amenities. The strategic plan also should include clear goals and measurable outcomes, so that you all can be guided in your development efforts in the next five years. Second was to focus on small business growth and local economic development. So while you all are doing this plan, you still can go ahead and start focusing on that small business growth and economic development. Goldsboro should prioritize creating an environment that supports small businesses, entrepreneurship, and local innovation. This includes offering resources for business incubation, mentorship, and workforce development, as well as creating incentives that encourage investment in businesses that are directly benefiting the community. So communities that benefit the quality of life, coming up with some sort of incentive package for those businesses might be a really good first step. Three is to prioritize neighborhood revitalization and community investment, so again, not confining those efforts to the downtown area, even though the downtown is super important and it should be continued. The comprehensive approach should really now, at this point, be undertaken to include revitalizing underdeveloped neighborhoods, improving your public spaces, and creating infrastructure that enhances the living experiences for residents. And then four was to improve your interorganizational collaboration and communication, that was that networking piece that we talked about. The creation of a central communication hub or a task force could improve the coordination and ensure that all stakeholders are working together towards common goals. Enhance citizen engagement and transparency, like that fourth finding that we talked about. So transparency in the development process is going to be super critical for you all. Citizens could, or the city should create a platform that encourages regular feedback from citizens and involvement to ensure that development aligns with their needs and desires, but also addresses their concerns about the gentrification and displacement that some people are fearful of. And it needs to be built into the planning and development process to ensure equity for all residents. And then six is consider the role of an economic development professional. So this might not be right now, but I think that that is something that you all do need to be considering, especially if you do go forward with a plan. The city needs to explore the possibility of creating an economic development role within the city government or contracting with a professional economic developer, the person or team, whatever you all decide would be responsible for driving the city's economic development strategies, building those partnerships, and coordinating development efforts across all those sectors. And then seven is support for family-friendly initiatives to attract and retain families. And then eight is that encourage broader citizen participation. You all have a really great group of people in your city, and you all have a lot of really great leaders that we found within that work group and when we were doing the tour. The problem is you can't rely on the same 20 people to do everything, because people do get burnt out, right? And you all are a large city. So to prevent the burnout of these small groups of active community leaders or the groups of active community leaders you have, we need to foster a sense of ownership and pride in the city's future and the city's development, so encouraging the volunteerism, encouraging people that might not normally be involved to get involved, and having those new faces in this development process, so that you're not burning out or calling on the same 20 to 30 people every time you all need a different plan or an initiative, initiative needs to be done or a project needs to be done. Okay. And then as far as the, just to conclude, the Economic Visioning Forum really provided a lot of valuable insights with the current state of Goldsboro's economic development, and really outlined a lot of vision, you all need to develop a comprehensive economic development strategic plan that's inclusive, it's transparent, and it's rooted in strong partnerships. And so some of the next steps that I have in this report at the end is explore hiring an expert that can create that comprehensive economic development plan, whether that be working with the EDA, working with the COG, or working with a consultant. Establish a task force or a subcommittee responsible for coordinating that plan's development and implementation, so that you actually see those projects get, get into place and come to fruition. And then increasing the citizen engagement and strengthening partnerships and communication across stakeholders. Those last two, you all could do right now. You all don't have to wait until you have an economic development strategic plan, until that process is done, to start creating that network, to start creating that communication piece and becoming that central communication hub for the city. You don't have to wait to do that, you don't have to wait to increase your citizen engagement. Those are things that you can start doing now, and there are small incremental steps that you can take to make those things a reality. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Any, any questions at this thing?
I do have some questions. And you may not can answer it, but maybe Mr. Arnold or Matt could answer it for me. When is the last time the city of Goldsboro had a three, five, and 10-year strategic
The last one we did on this was, that's one of the reasons why we were recommending or at least exploring, updating the plan was 2000, what did you say, 22?
22 was the CDAP, so that's not a full comprehensive plan. So from what I know, it was much earlier than that.
It's, it's just new, that's one of the reasons why.
Yeah, for a municipality, that is kind of concerning to me.
Well, and we have, we have our strategic goals that Mr. Murphy works in, in every day, we have, we have those guiding principles, but part of that is why we're doing this in our land use plan and our parks and recreation plan, because to your point, these things are, these things are due, and we, that's why we're doing them.
So, go ahead.
No, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, you know, we know, we noticed it was an area where we needed to have some updates done, and, you know, it's, it's telling that we had the discussions this morning, I think it's indicative of why she's here and why we're doing this, because she did identify gaps, and it's why we have the President of the Chamber here, it's why we have Craig Vogt from WCEA that's coming on the line to have this panel discussion, to kind of give you guys ideas about, okay, here's the snapshot, here's where we are now, here's some things we think we can do now and what we need to do next to plan for the future.
And to answer that, in 2018, I had a question about updating the, what, 2018, 2019, when I first got on the council, because I was doing some research on looking at our economic strategic plan. And that was under, I think, Mayor, Mayor Hamm, when I first came on. And I was aware, answering that question, and then I was aware that Mr. Murphy was updating some strategies. But I would like to say that I really enjoyed being part of the conversation and the discussion with this committee. We had some really great people, and I think a lot of information, good things came out, we were able to discuss and comment with these things, and so I'm just really looking forward to what we can do and how we can utilize your recommendations.
I'm sorry, I have another question.
No, that's fine.
I'm thinking about business incubation and also small business development. My next question is, in identifying some of your gaps, I'm looking at the structure of the DGDC, and my next question, I don't know who it is directed to, is does the city of Goldsboro have any type of MOU with the DGDC nonprofit side?
No, not. No, not that I'm aware of.
So there is no kind of MOU put in place between the city of Goldsboro and the nonprofit side?
Erin, is there any kind of?
So there's not a formal MOU between the city and the DGDC outside of our contracts related to use of the space and then our job descriptions. So if you look at our job descriptions for all of my staff, you'll see the connection between the two entities. And then within the DGDC bylaws, it outlines how the two entities work together, but there has never been a formal MOU.
The organizations have always been, you know, intended to work in lockstep towards unified goals. I think we've got to have a conversation on what those goals are, so that all of us are on the exact same page and can proudly state and transparently state what it is that the city is asking DGDC to pursue or not. But, you know, the organizations have always tried to work in coordination. It's a fairly recent phenomenon that there's been a, I'll say fairly recently, in the last few years, it's been a concern. I think some of that is more boogeyman syndrome, I'll just say it out loud, but the organizations are intended to work in lockstep.
Can you, I don't understand what you're talking about. I apologize, I don't understand when you're talking about boogeyman syndrome. Can you kind of explain what you're referencing there?
Sure, sure. Starting several years ago, you started hearing just weird, wild rumors that don't really add up. The point, and I don't want to go down, get on this path, my point is that the organizations are intended to work in lockstep. And where the city of Goldsboro wants to direct revitalization and, you know, doing revitalization in specific ways as to avoid crossing the threshold into gentrification and tasking, you know, the, creating a downtown development office and an MSD and that layer of taxation to be able to fund revitalization in a dense taxable area, I think was the intent. And my point is just that we need to get back to working in lockstep and there being a degree of trust and open communication between the organizations and just more collaboration and direct working together. That's really all my point was.
I have a question. Is it not proper for us to have an agreement with DGDC as a government? Is that not proper for us to have one?
There's dozens of Main Street programs in DGDC.
I can't hear you, what'd you say?
There's dozens of cities that don't have those types of agreements, because it's like the mayor said, it's understood, they work as the nonprofit arm for the downtown development. I mean, it's not harmful to have an agreement, and we could certainly do that, and I'm not opposed to doing that, but to say that it's a normal process, I can't really say that, because I've seen a lot of times when there just hasn't been that level of formality. Whether there needs to be, you know, you can discuss that.
We also have our annual Main Street Agreement, which you can speak to this too, but that's signed every year by the city manager and the mayor, and that outlines how we work together, and it's a requirement to become a Main Street community and maintain our accreditation. The Main Street community and the DGDC were actually created prior to a city department. So the tax district was created in 1978. The nonprofit was created around the same time to help manage the tax district by the request from the city. And then in the 90s, the department was actually created to bolster that effort and add some additional resources, because downtown development is so dynamic and they need additional resources to ensure their success. And I think we can all agree that by following that Main Street process, we have enjoyed a lot of success that's led to $51 million in private investment in the last 10 years, 200 jobs created, or no, 700 jobs created, 200 building expansions and renovations. So all of that really is because of our work in tandem. I don't think there's anything wrong with creating an MOU, but we do have agreements in place that outline how we are connected.
Other questions?
My recommendation would be that at a future date, that we look at an MOU, because to me, I'm going to beg to differ with the city manager, I think MOUs are important, especially even when it comes to outfit of facilities, maintenance, that kind of thing. So I would like to see this council look at an MOU at a later date.
Consensus on that? Any disagreement?
No.
I was going to make a couple of comments. I'm okay if the group wants to have an MOU, if that's, I mean, I've kind of been familiar enough and around a number of years, been familiar with how that department operates, and I've sort of been of the opinion, if it's not broke, why do we need to fix it? But I'm okay with an MOU, because it's just going to say what we're already doing, I guess. A couple of more comments, and thank you, Ms. Darlington, for being here. It was a pleasure to be able to sit with you months back and talk about some of this stuff in front of you, getting the report together. Thank you, Erin. A couple of comments along the lines of what you've presented here to us, that I'm glad that the chamber president, I see him in our audience, and I'm glad that he's here, because the chamber is our small business resource. I mean, they're our partner that keeps those wheels turning, that we fund them, and they're the cog in that wheel, so to speak. So I'm glad our chamber president's here, and I'm sure he's going to be speaking to us. And as Matt mentioned, somebody from the WCEA will be here to speak to us as well regarding economic development from an industrial standpoint. And I want to point out again, it's important for us to make sure that we in our minds differentiate between business and commercial development and economic development, because the city has partnered with the county for economic industrial development, which is something the city couldn't do by itself, because that's a very expensive endeavor to build shell buildings and, I mean, we have a situation now with the local economic development that we're having to be in competition with another state as a county, trying to figure out how to move a project. So it's important, I think, that we continue to differentiate between the two. And revitalization beyond downtown, I'm all in for that. I would like to see us be able to do that from one end of this city to the next. But I think it's important to also point out that our downtown area is the epicenter for the county. And it's been said before, you know, well, we, which is true, we have a good-looking center street, where Main Street, you know, recognized, top-notch community. When you ride down Center Street, you do see art and you see flowers, et cetera. And we have to maintain that, because it's ground zero. So everyone that comes to Wayne County to consider doing business, to open a business, to do business, comes downtown. Where's City Hall? Where's the courthouse? Where is our downtown development office? Where is our travel and tourism office? So I think it's important that we say revitalization beyond downtown without losing fact, losing sight of the fact that downtown is ground zero, literally, for our entire county and our community, and everything that we do branches out from downtown.
Other comments, questions? Matt?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go ahead.
Mr. White, and then, okay.
I'd just like to thank you for your report, and it did show us ourselves and what we do need to improve in, and reinforce some of the things that we've already talked about as a council. So I really like to thank you for that. I agree wholeheartedly with Councilman Boyett that our downtown is the epicenter for Wayne County, but I do like the fact that we're really hammering home the fact that we need to branch outside of downtown and start trying to revitalize some of our other districts and our other communities. So I really thank you for your report today.
Of course, thank you.
Okay, Ms. White?
I was going to echo the same sentiments and say you've done an excellent job in this group. The last thing is just very minute, but on the vision statement, is that vision, is that the vision statement that the city's going to use in all our publications for our, you know, policies, procedures, the handbooks that we give out to employees?
So not normally. So because it's an economic development strategic vision statement, if you wanted to adopt it as your strategic statement in general, you could, but right now, it's just for economic development. So I would just use it in that context, like for business recruitment and for quality of life efforts and any kind of economic development effort that you have. If you all wanted to do it and have it be broader and put it on other things, you are more than welcome to. It's not expected.
Mr. Durham, if you don't mind, I would ask that council consider coalescing around a vision statement, because I do, I've been very public about this, I want us to move towards a development services model, where that we are focusing on being able to help developers, you know, through the process. If it doesn't, if it's not a good development, we're going to say no, but if it's something that's coming through, helping them navigate the red tape when it's red tape for the right reasons, I would like us to have some kind of statement. I'm not asking council, you know, to vote right now, obviously. This is the first time that we've really gotten to have this conversation as a group in this format, but as we move forward with things and as we go through this budget year and decide how we want to fund development services, I would ask that council consider a vision statement that we can agree on, that we can proudly display on our materials.
Mr. Ray, let me ask you a question, if I can.
Sure.
Just for clarification. So is it specifically related to economic development, or is it just a city-wide vision?
I would limit this within the idea of business and commercial development.
All right, okay, very good.
I agree with the mayor on that one.
And may I add that your next step, Samantha and I will develop a resolution for your next council meeting to adopt this plan. That will formalize your acceptance of this plan, including that vision statement, and then that will be the genesis of how we go out and start the economic development plan, if you so fund that down the line and see that carry over into the future.
Mr. Durham, since the floor is yours and you're moderating, if we have any form of consensus from council, then obviously we can instruct the manager to go forward with that resolution, if the document is ready and we're ready to move on it, and if that vision statement as presented is acceptable. I personally think that it's very good, but I've also, you know, been able to kind of see this evolve, and a number of other council members, it's been in weekly reports, and it's not a new thing, but I don't want to force anyone to agree today, it's something that's going to be on the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Fair enough.
But if it is, if there is a consensus, then I'm certainly not willing to hold up the show.
Is anyone opposed to that action? All right, none? All right.
There you go.
Very good. Matt, do you have anything else you want to add to that?
No, I just want to make sure that some of the questions, we might want to hold off for the panel gets, you know, that's the next step.
So our next session is the panel discussion, I guess to turn it over to Kelly and...
Sure. So Matt and Scott, join us. So I think what we envisioned, taking a few minutes here, we thought we'd bring the subject experts in, and then also, I'm not certain if there is anybody available that can represent Wayne County economic development.
Just point of clarification, Craig Vogt will be joining by Zoom. I believe that I see IT screen right now in the background, so get that, get that video up.
Great.
If we have to just simply do audio, so be it, but, you know, and if we have to do speakerphone or the microphone, you know, we'll do what we got to do, but...
So we put together some questions in advance of this, and I think we've touched on these, but we can kind of go further on this if we want, and if you're okay, Mayor, we could start with this panel discussion.
There he is. Branded background and everything.
So the idea here, just to, I don't want to steal any of Kelly's thunder, but we put these questions together, I drafted some of them, don't feel like you have to use those, but to take what we've talked about up to the point right now, and any questions you've had previously, and depose them to these panel experts here, who come from a different background, and together, they represent a very strong overall view of business and economic development. So that's why they're here today.
All right, just a quick audio check. Mr. Vogt, can you hear us?
Can you hear us?
There you go. Yeah, I know we can.
Can you hear Brad? Well, it's, uh, the, uh, where he is.
All right. One second, Brad's getting ready to reorient. We could hear that you were trying to talk, but not hear what you were saying.
I'll put it here. Will it work?
Try it.
All right. They can hear you guys call.
If you put it there and then lay a microphone next to it, however you feel like you need to do it.
We're having to improvise and overcome.
And, and Mr. Vogt, absolutely, you did call in sick on this, but still said, if you can do it by Zoom, we'll figure it out, so I do appreciate that. All right. Quick audio check now. So, Mr. Vogt, can we hear you?
A little bit better.
A little bit better? All right, let's see, once that microphone's turned on, we might be okay, because we couldn't hear that at all. Yep.
Get it up and we'll, we'll feed.
We'll get it. Just one second, Brad's grabbing the iPad, he's getting ready to move the slider up. Just put it back where it was. All right, Craig, if you could?
We'll try it. I apologize, and I appreciate you guys making concessions for me, giving it a sick time.
No, this is going to work out just fine. Brad may have to adjust the slider on the fly a little bit, but, Mr. Satterfield, I know we've got you, so we can hear and see you guys. Mr. Vogt, we can see you, and I think we're going to be able to hear you as well. When I stop talking, I have a feeling that the feedback will probably drop off. So with that, I'll give the floor back to Mr. Durham. Y'all, go forth and conquer.
So panel, thank you for coming, and council, I'll start with the first question, and then if there are things you would like to ask the group, please do. And we have about 15 to 20 minutes. So this first one, I think, is one of interest to all of us, is what's the difference between economic development and business development from your perspective? Because they are kind of terms interchangeably used, but they are different. So I don't know who would like to take that, but if there's somebody that could take that, Brian, Scott, and Craig might be the most appropriate, but if you could take that for a couple minutes?
Sure, happy to.
Yeah, I'll...
Go ahead, Craig.
Well, I just, I thought it was directed at me, but Scott, if it was you, you go ahead, but I do want to make sure to add something.
Craig, go right ahead.
Okay. One thing that I think would be helpful for everybody to know is that the term economic development, I believe, in Wayne County is used to describe only a portion of economic development. Economic development in Wayne County typically refers to what is industrial development. And I believe that the cause of this is the fact that the Wayne County Development Alliance spawned out of the old Industrial Development Commission whenever they grouped together with the committees of 100. So I would like to say, economic development is a lot broader than the term economic development that is being used inside of Wayne County. Economic development could include looking at housing, infrastructure, business development, community development, and what we do, industrial development and recruiting industry in. So I wanted to make sure that everybody kind of understood how economic development is used in Wayne County, as far as the term.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I think that, that in some ways, it's been a limiting factor, too, because, you know, the assumption is, is that economic development is solely about recruiting, you know, external parties that are industries. parties that are industries to come in and, and, you know, if they're bringing jobs and, and raising wages, then, you know, that's, that's kind of our strategy. And so then your investment in economic development is technically about partnering to incentivize those external industries and about building shell buildings. But frankly, economic development is, is way more robust than that. And if you just take the words to develop an economy, you know, how do you do that? How do you make sure that the economy in Goldsboro and in Wayne County is strong? And that includes a lot more than just industry. It includes retail, you know, it includes services, it includes just a whole lot of different scale of entrepreneur, you know, so some are very startup and, and early stage and then some are, you know, late, later stage. And, you know, most of our businesses are small businesses, so most of our existing businesses, according to the SBA, they are already small businesses. I'd say like 97% of them, you know, so if they have less than 500 employees, they're technically a small business, which is almost every business we have, even the very successful ones. So, you know, it's how do you, how do you, how do you generate more of that? And at this point in time, you know, you, you don't really have, the development alliance, that's not been their, that's not really been their strategy, their sort of area of focus and expertise and, and I'm not sure that it's really categorized with anybody right now in the city of Goldsboro. There's a lot of support structures in place, like what the Chamber does and, and certainly DGDC, you know, in a sort, right now, the DGDC on those, for those 21 blocks of the MSD, they provide quite a bit of economic, microeconomic development, a lot of merchant-based, small business-based, local, independent kind of thing, but there's just such, such a greater range to this. And then, you know, quality of life being associated with that, all of that ties into, do you have a strong and diverse economy or do you not? And economic development, to Craig's point, means more than just industry.
Do you have anything you wanna add?
Yeah, I just wanna add, as far as what we do on the Main Street and Rural Planning side, it is what they were saying, it's a much more robust, a much more comprehensive look at economic development. And one of the things during the forum, and we've been hearing all over east or north Carolina and north Carolina in general, is the idea that communities are looking to be more resilient and more sustainable in their economic development efforts. And economic development can only be sustainable, it can only be resilient if you're also looking at equity, if you're also looking at the environment, if you're also looking at infrastructure and quality of life and ways to retain residents, ways to retain your labor force, all of these things that support businesses and support your industries. And so economic development for us is that, looking at the whole picture, which is why in that report, we don't talk a lot about the industry recruitment side as far as gaps. It's mainly looking at the support, like the housing, the family-friendly initiatives, the childcare, all those things that you need to have in place to be able to have a strong economy and to be able to have a diverse economy and a diverse workforce and to support those people that are working within your community.
Mobility. I mean, I think that that's the word that, to me, is the most important word, if I'm you, that I'd be thinking about, is, is how possible is it for the people in the city we live in to have mobility, no matter where they start? You can't guarantee a finishing point, but are the conditions present? You know, are the obstacles to the degree that a city and a government can get involved, remove obstacles and get them out of the way so that it opens the door for people to be able to take next steps in their life? Are they able to get skills? Are they able to afford to live here? Can they raise their kid here? If there's not adequate childcare, then that keeps people out of a workforce that could grow their opportunities and grow their career, particularly for women. So when you, when, you know, like all of these things, they, they really, that quality of life, sometimes when people say that, I think they think about it like, oh, it's just, we wanna have this cool place to live. That's, it's way more than that, you know? And, and you have one conversation with the base and they'll tell you this when it comes to their readiness. The same thing that's true for the base when it comes to readiness is the same thing that's true for industry when it comes to employees and employment. Like, but this idea that the conditions ought to be present for mobility is to, is the degree to which a city ought to be involved in making sure that that can occur. And the better that can occur and the more often that can occur for entrepreneurs who are starting a business or for people who are starting in the workforce or for people who are, you know, trying to get a second chance after, you know, maybe being incarcerated, it, it almost doesn't matter. The same question needs to be able to be answered equitably across the board. Is there opportunity here? And is, is the community strong enough to sustain and, and sort of provide a, a floor for people to be able to grow their future and grow their family?
Something that came up yesterday at the Wayne County Development Alliance meetings, just ensuring that we're not stepping on each other's toes, we're not, you know, getting in each other's way. Obviously, this is something that I championed very early on in my time in, in politics of getting, excuse me, getting entrepreneurship support and business development support in place for the city of Goldsboro. How do we, and Craig, this is probably more developed to you, or more directed to you, how do we ensure that we're working lockstep with Wayne County Development Alliance in their industrial recruitment efforts? Our, we've talked a little bit about what DGDC does with, with those 21 blocks and those quality of life businesses, expanding that to the whole city. If we're successful, it will make Wayne County Developments, Development Alliance that more effective. How do we ensure that we make sure that relationship stays strong and that we work together in tandem?
Yeah, so, thank you for that, Mayor. I, I think the number one asset that you guys have is counsel before yet, being on our board. As many of you may know, but if you don't know, one-third of our board makeup are actually people from the city of Goldsboro, right? So either they represent a business within the city of Goldsboro or they are resident of the city of Goldsboro. So we've got a vested interest at the Wayne County Development Alliance to make sure that Wayne County and Goldsboro are both successful. I, I think that probably that the number one thing that we need to do is we need to make sure that everyone understands what it is that the city is going to do with this plan, right? And there's, there's some confusion and one of the things that some people think is that there might be some competition, right? So we need to make sure that it's a clear message that there's no competition, that we're not trying to do any of that, that we're trying to support. If you look at Pitt County, Greenville has got a economic developer, Pitt County has got an economic developer, Aiden's got an economic developer, also in Winterville, there's an economic developer, and then there's a nonprofit, the Greenville East Alliance. All of them operate within side of one county and they operate very well. So I think it's a matter of clear communication. Probably one of the best things for, for the Wayne County Development Alliance and the economic development region has been what has happened in downtown Goldsboro. It is great to be able to bring in a client from out of state or out of country. And when we go to take them to somewhere to eat or to see what our community is like, the first thing we think of is coming downtown. That's an asset. So anything that you can do to develop within the city, providing additional support, quality of life things that Mr. Satterfield had mentioned, are all gonna be able to support the efforts of the Wayne County Development Alliance and the EDR. Probably one of the most strategic things, I believe, that the city of Goldsboro could do is to have someone who is the main point of contact that businesses and even your allies can contact. It is great that I know Kenny Totten's cell phone number, right, or Jonathan Perry's cell phone number, and when this business is having an issue, I know exactly which person I need to, to contact. But for a business, sometimes they get mixed up in the who do I call, am I leaving a message out of just a generic phone number, and they tend to get a little aggravated. So for businesses that come through the economic development region and the Development Alliance, we know the people to be able to call, but that's probably not gonna be the case for every business that's trying to start up in Goldsboro. So I believe somebody that could help to streamline what that looks like, getting through permitting processes, getting through, you know, whether it's a business permit or whether that's gonna be getting my utilities hooked up, that main point of contact would probably be a very strategic thing for the city of Goldsboro.
And collecting that data, I would say as well, Craig, 'cause like right now, there's not, there's not a really good record that anybody has of the... So like if you wanted to know, how do you go, other than walk around and drive around, there's not, there's not a good list to know, well, this business has started up on this side of town and this business has started up on this side of town. And just the ability to collect the data that you're capturing through a process that you already have established, you know, I would add, someone maybe being responsible for trying to capitalize on that too. Yeah, like, you know...
That captures everything over a certain size. You know, your home-based businesses may or may not have one, but to your point, it captures...
But like right now, you, for example, you have businesses downtown that aren't registered.
Right.
And so, I just think that there's opportunity. There's, it's an area of opportunity where, you know, could get better about making sure we get them registered and under, businesses understanding the value of being registered with the city. And then the city sort of being able to follow on with service, either through partners or direct or whatever it might be. And then there's so much use for that data for the city, that's an advantage to the city if they have accurate data related to this, that not having it puts you at a disadvantage in a, in a handful of ways.
Does anybody else have any questions at all right now? The panel, the board, maybe you have?
Mr. Foote, I have a, a question for you. And I, and I could probably just go back and look it up, but those cities that you were just referencing, and you were talking about the Economic Development Department or Economic Development Director, are those, do they also have similar organizations in their city, similar to the DGDC or they don't have those departments and they just have the Economic Department?
I can speak to that question.
Do your smaller municipalities? And I believe your, I believe Matt Livingston probably even answered some of this. I think he spent some time up in that area, if I'm not mistaken. Some of your smaller municipalities, they are holistic, everything economic development, right? And inside the city of Greenville, Greenville, to my knowledge, was the most recent one to add on the title of economic developer. When you go to read on the website, it sounds like they're doing more along the lines of what the DGDC does inside of Goldsboro, however, I think it's more of a holistic look within the entire city of Greenville and not necessarily just downtown. I, I would have to research that a little bit, I don't know fully, but I do know that every one of them do have some sort of a interest in industrial development. So I don't want you to think that the city of Goldsboro should not be interested in industrial development or trying to attract industrial development into the city limits. I think industrial development, if you'll look at some of the return, it's large capital investments, it is jobs, but that large capital investment returns to the city a large tax revenue that allows you to be able to provide more services to the city residents. So I, I think there is a place for that to happen in the city. How exactly that is, you know, I, I think we've, we've been trying to figure that out. Like, right, so the Wayne County Development Alliance has existed for 20 years, but for the past three or four, the industrial recruitment has been done by the Economic Development Region. So at the Development Alliance, we're currently trying to figure out our new mission statement. We're going into a new strategic plan and our new capital campaign. And some of the things that we're looking at is where is the next industrial development happen at?
I'll comment on that if you don't mind. I would say it happens in Wilmington, it happens in Raleigh, it happens in New Bern, it happens in Wilson, it happens in Rocky Mount.
More head city.
More head city, yeah, I mean...
They have both.
They almost all have a, a city economic development focus, they have an industrial sort of development alliance and public-private partnership, and they have a nonprofit sort of arm to focus on their downtown or municipal core development areas.
And I'm definitely not referencing the nonprofit arm. I'm saying in most of those cities are those two separate departments. If you were to compare like the DGDC and in each city, does each one of those cities have a department similar to the DGDC in addition to an economic development?
Oh, yeah, well, so let's take Wilson, like Wilson's a great example, I think, where you have, so you have somebody kind of over top of your, both your economic development and your community development, so that those things kind of strategically happen in tandem and everybody's covered, right?
Perfect, you answered my question right there with that sentence.
And then I would say under the economic development and under the community development, you have your people with their areas of focus and downtown, Wilson is one of those areas of focus.
Thank you.
But the business recruitment person like in Wilson is not just recruiting for downtown, they're recruiting for the city.
Yes, and that's very similar. I think the town of Apex is also set up like that and, you know, our previous economic developer in Wayne County that started up the Development Alliance, Joanna Helms is up there, she oversees all of the economic development from the town of Apex, but then she has somebody within that organization that more so concentrates on small businesses and, and the Main Street aspect.
And I think like, just, is the last city to just add that position? And so they, they've gone to that level two plate and has... We're, we're getting close to lunch, so if there's another question or two for panel before we wrap up this session?
I think Matt did have a response.
I think our challenge has been, you know, not necessarily, do we need this, but, you know, identifying somebody that makes sense within the organization that would be that point of contact for economic development activities. So that's kind of what we're thinking, maybe if we do move forward with the plan, we would kind of identify the best way to go about doing that.
Any last questions for the group? Comments on this topic? Thank you all for your time.
I just, I do have one more comment. I just wanna say thank you very much for, to the city for pursuing this with real seriousness. I know on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce and a lot of the folks we deal with, to know that the city is trying to have a comprehensive economic development plan and a focus in this area, we think is a huge, huge benefit to all of the communities. So thank you so much for what you're doing.
Agree with Mr. Satterfield and also we let the mayor know he will be one of the people that gets interviewed as we do our economic development strategic plans with the Development Alliance. So we wanna be lockstep in, in right there with the city as you guys move forward.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right, we're supposed to have a working lunch with Mr. Lumpkin from Wayne County, talking about Reval. So, Ms. Getz, the, what's the status of food?
How do, how would you like, what's the logistics? How would you like this to proceed?
Come back, all right. Let's go get our food, then we'll come back and hear from Mr. Lumpkin.
Go ahead, time it out.
For any length of time?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
No, no, we're gonna keep going, just get your lunch and come back.
All right, just keep the cameras going and everything, 'cause we, we remain live literally on, on air.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, we'll, we'll stay live. Y'all remember hot mics?
I wanna show you something. So here's our pool. This says reports.
Okay, all right.
It just says reports.
Yeah.
Oh, good idea. It's cool. You ready?
Oh, you got it. So you can't get it?
I don't think so.
Not today.
Well, you know, this was somebody's idea. I facilitated that idea. So I think, I think we can talk about that and see if we can manage maybe tomorrow if we do it. I don't know.
Lot of things to do, don't forget.
Yeah, I liked it. It was good. Yeah, I know, the church is like you go to, I mean, they'll have like fires and stuff, but mainly organ, and they'll just have one of these stands and stuff like that. They don't go all out and everything. But it was nice. It was the first time I'd ever actually been in that church. So, yeah.
He's more...
No.
Yeah, we're good.
We bring those.
No, 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 sir.
And I mean, if an officer...
Hey, shoot.
Because I mean, I want to...
What's your name, man?
What I tried to do was...
I'm just...
So, let me ask you this, man.
See? See, 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 I've been through things, man, I've got it.
I've really increased my...
Wait, we're checking, we're like, man.
You didn't even work it out.
You didn't, that wasn't what you did, right?
We gotta reset.
Okay.
Yeah, we're in the tight, that's why I'm...
Gotcha. I didn't know you were gonna rhetorical anything, though. All right, good. He's working on. I did, yes. Question to you.
Let's go to another session. So that's, it's kind of, it's a good manner that we swap.
Oh, you want to do it, like, so she's here, she's gotta go.
Right, and those, which you got, they have, we could swap them out. Question to you, is she gonna be in the others, too? That's more important. They won't make the decision. Ted Fall, yeah. Nice to see you. Yeah. I don't know what's on your mind, but I have to... Otavius, how you doing? Nice to see you. Good? Good. Chad, how are you? Pretty good, I hear you. See you. Thank you. This way again. All right.
Get your lunch, Matt.
Sorry, you with the police vest on, you gonna start wearing that?
No, sir. But I had to choose between police and fire. It would definitely be...
Why's that?
I had a chance to do a ride-along with them, and I had no idea that their scope of work is amazing, yes. It's amazing.
Yeah, yeah, it is indeed a lot. Well, both of them.
Yeah, for sure.
Of course, through the years, working with both police and fire has always been a challenge, and continue to be a challenge. There's always that, you know, built-in competition between the two.
Oh, yeah, I think so.
You know that, right?
I think so. For sure. Did you get lunch?
Yeah.
They're coming back. Yeah, they're coming. Yeah, I just made an announcement. They're all heading back.
Make some effort to keep them.
You're fine, you're fine. I've got plenty of room, you and Jamie. Work it out.
Yes, you're good.
She's cool.
Okay.
She's a bomb.
Perfect.
She's in line, she's coming. Well, you ready? Let me close this out and live for another day.
Yep, live for another. Yeah, yep. All right, everyone, I'll remind everyone that we are not in recess, microphones are still hot. Brad, as we are working through this next session, given that there's food involved, and so the entire audio on the video isn't conk, conk, and chewing noises, if you don't mind throttling us back up here, and then when someone requests the floor, if you can just throttle up their individual mic, and then we'll get back to normal AV procedures after we're no longer chewing and crunching and enjoying a meal. It is good as a group to break bread together, guys. I realize that for a variety of reasons, we've made the budget decision, and I think it's a good decision to go to where that we are, we're snacks, we're having a meeting, and we're going. But it is, it is good to get this council together and break bread together and be able to just simply be people and talk for a few minutes. All right, all council members being back in their chair, I believe, Mr. Livingston back in his chair, everyone is back. So with that, Mr. Droner, floor is yours.
We're ready to roll. Mr. Lumpkin is...
Never mind. So, having literally just said the thing...
He's gonna get water.
Oh, there we go.
He had to get my fridge ready for y'all.
There you go.
All right. You got your audio visuals?
He's all good.
All right, good.
And Mr. Lumpkin, if you would, give them just a second in case Brad needs to throttle yours up, since I made the request that he kind of throttle all the microphones back down, just to avoid the, this noise. Brad, thumbs up, you good? Thumbs up.
All right, wonderful, yes, you can hear me. Hello, council. Good to see everybody. I want to thank you, Matt, Catherine, for inviting me to come out today and talk about something dear and dear to my heart, this reappraisal. It's been, it's been a happening. I know y'all...